Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall this morning. I'll let folks gather in and I'm so excited to see everyone here this morning. This is our last City Council meeting of the decade. So what a wonderful day to celebrate such an important member of our community. So I'll wait for Mayor Frye and Councilmembers Fletcher and Wright to join me. We're going to begin this morning often before our official business. We have the chance to recognize important people and events in our community. And I'm so thrilled that you're all here today to celebrate Mr. Maroni. And so I'll invite my colleagues over to present this resolution. Councilmember Fletcher.
Good morning, everyone. And I really mean everyone. Wow. It's so appropriate that we have basically the complete arts community of the former Warehouse District and the East Side here today, basically following our favorite Pied Piper. Our favorite joyous Pied Piper, Aldo Maroni. You know, before I say some really serious things and have a very formal whereas, it should just be noted that when I first met Aldo Maroni, it wasn't about some strategy to build community or an aesthetic conversation of great magnitude. We were just at a party in the Warehouse District and having a good time as probably a couple of bon vivants. But very quickly, even when you're having fun, he can weave in a narrative of meaning and really grab your attention at that time. And it's interesting that as he can bring a serious notion to having fun, and we had some fun, he can bring the fun to the serious work of community building and recognition of each other as we grow as people, as a community, and to be quite frankly, as a city. You've been a part of that in a deep, meaningful, and fun way. As a matter of fact, I just can only think of one word when I think of his outstanding art and basically his heart and soul, is the community builder. I just cannot even think of the East Side Arts District without your spirit weaving through every inch of it. And it's interesting, in the early scene, you know, what was sort of the dominant moment of that scene, the early, the mid-eighties, the nineties? You had that sort of rise of artists, kind of sexy news in movies, but it was also the time was getting highly commodified, distant from the community. And also there's kind of a grassroots moment, you know, kind of that punk rock, you know, a lot of spray paint and mannequin parts, and that was kind of cool and heroic. But Aldo had another conversation to share, and I think that's the one that persists and grows and that we cherish today. So again, thank you, and I give it to my great colleague, also an artist himself, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, Aldo, for everything you've done for our community. I think there, I've been reflecting on your work, and you and I don't know each other as long or as well as many others in the room, and I think it's such a testament to this entire community. There are very few people who can get the arts community to City Hall. And there are very, and there are very few people who can get the arts community anywhere at 9:00 AM in these numbers. And it's really a testament to everyone's love for you. And I just, I've been reflecting on your work, and I've been reflecting on how powerful it is to add work to public space that both contributes to change, that contributes to the new that we're building, and really honors and grabs what's so special about our history, that grabs what's so special about the different moments in time, and brings them into continuity with each other in a way that I just, I appreciate so much. And I think it's so symbolic of the direction that our city is moving. I think that it's so in line with the way that our city thinks about ourselves. And I think you really, through your work, have been a thought leader in the way our city is developing. So I want to thank you for your contribution and share this resolution. And then I know the mayor will also want to say a few words. Terrific. So whereas Aldo Maroni graduated with a Bachelor of Fine Arts from the Minneapolis College of Art and Design in 1976 and went on to exhibit his work at the Walker Art Center within a year of graduating. And whereas Aldo Maroni was a pioneer who sparked the Warehouse District art movement in Minneapolis in the 1970s. And whereas Aldo Maroni, through his curious mind, colorful spirit, and creative hands, made an indelibly whimsical mark on the Marcy Holmes neighborhood in 2002 through the Sixth Avenue Stroll, his multi-block gallery of 23 bronze sculptures along Sixth Avenue Southeast. And whereas Aldo Maroni was one of the contributing founders of the Northeast Minneapolis Arts District and received a Vision Award from the Northeast Arts District Board in 2017 for his leadership and commitment in the service of art, artists, and culture. And whereas Aldo Maroni was one of the first residents and is the undisputed dean of the A-Mill Artist Lofts, where he facilitated the First Artist Neighbor Association and set first precedent for studio development and access and built community with his fellow working artists.
And whereas Aldo Maroni is in the collections of every major Minnesota art museum, including the Walker Art Center, the Minneapolis Institute of Art, the Frederick Wiseman Museum, the Tweed Museum, and the Minnesota Museum of American Art. And whereas Aldo Maroni has received numerous grants and fellowships, including from the National Endowment of the Arts, the Minnesota State Arts Board, McKnight Foundation, Jerome Foundation, and the Bush Foundation. And whereas Aldo Maroni's work represented every level of civic life, from neighborhood organizations to the federal government, including city, state, regional, and federal collections. And whereas Aldo Maroni, over the course of his career, has been dedicated to supporting, sharing his knowledge, mentoring, and creating community with his fellow artists. And whereas Aldo Maroni has worked for decades at the intersection of art-making and community building, bringing generous and people-centered aesthetic to every project, every partner, from small neighborhood groups to large formal organizations. And whereas Aldo Maroni captured the built environment of Minneapolis through his art and preserved it for generations. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council in the city of Minneapolis and the mayor that we recognize his commitment to building community, sparking joy, and forging connections between people, places, through public art, over the course of his distinguished career. So therefore, we hereby present the resolution to Aldo Maroni, together with our most sincere thanks, appreciation, and deep gratitude.
First, I barely recognize this guy based on how he's dressed. Normally, the hair is sticking up in 15,000 different directions. I don't think I've ever seen you put on a, I didn't know you had a tie. I didn't know you had a jacket. I barely knew you had pants, man. So it's such a great honor to have this legend in City Hall, a force of life and a force of nature, who has quite literally been at the forefront of depicting and guiding the arts community in Northeast, yes, but also in the city of Minneapolis. Has been in the Warehouse District to Northeast Minneapolis, and we all followed you there, you know? And then ultimately, you're at the A-Mill now. And I remember that when I first met you, we were also at a party. That was a common theme. But we were arguing for affordable housing for artists to make sure that they could stay in the community. And this is back when it, like, it wasn't popular at all to advocate in favor of the A-Mill and affordable housing and the historic preservation that went along with it. But Aldo, as is usual, was at the forefront of all of it. He has become almost synonymous with the history of our city. But the unique thing about his art is while it is predominantly buildings, you somehow find this way of making it about people and community. It's this, it's this beautiful depiction of who our city is and what our city can be. And that in and of itself is beautiful. And so Aldo, you have a legacy here. We love you dearly, and in so many respects, you know, you're the sun, and we're just a bunch of flowers that are trying to bend to get a little bit more of your light. We love you.
We would love you to say something.
All right. I would love to say something. Am I speaking okay? Yeah, you can hear me. Wow. This is like, you guys, I got to tell you, it's overwhelming, you know? I know 99% of everybody here and anybody that I don't know come and say hello, then I'll know you. I'm lucky, in 1972, when I came here and I decided Minneapolis would be my home, I made the right choice. It's like, it's like true love. You know, you pick your partner, and then everything is going to be golden. Well, in my life, sometimes it didn't work out. But in relationship with my community and the people around me, it did work out. And it really, you have made me what I am. If I've had any successes at all, or I've made anything that's meaningful to anyone, it's because of the community that I'm a part of. I'm quite sure that if I hadn't come to Minnesota, none of this could have been, you know, it's that butterfly flops its wing and everything changes. Well, it's all true. It's really how it works. I'm very lucky, very blessed. I have a lot of love. I feel it. You all know my situation, which the rule is no worrying, we're not doing the sad sack. We are, where's Marie? Marie is my partner in crime and the adventure of going into the next place. And we're going to slide in, and we're going to do it joyfully. And it's about, we did good. We did good work, and we had fun, and it's like, it's not, you know, these next phases of your existence, whatever you believe they are, can be really wonderful too. And so I'm kind of weirdly looking forward to what's going to come next, you know? I hope they have a nice studio. That would be good. But this day is overwhelming, and I want to thank you all for coming out, but also for years and years and years of putting up with my nonsense and my insanities and, you know, all the things that we've done. Mary Altman and I have been together on this for a long, long time. And our city really is enriched by the programs here that go on inside here. And I know that it's a national model for other places. It's amazing. So it's me, but it's like all these people around me that have helped, and all of you in the room over the years. We're still doing California Building Studio. Tomorrow's Open Studio Day, we'll be there. Discount, no. You know, still got to get the rent. But anyhow, so we're still here. I work a couple hours a day. I have the best crew in the world. My at-home helpers, Maxie and Marie, are the best people in the world to be doing that. I'm not at all worried, and you shouldn't worry either. It's going to be a beautiful ride. It's going to be okay. All right? But it's BYOB at the final memorial, okay?
All so much for being here this morning. So we have a few more less exciting items ahead of us. I'll let folks gather and enjoy these moments before we start the official business of our meeting. All right. Good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. As folks take the time to gather and pay their last moments of celebration here, we will begin our official meeting. So I will call to order our official meeting for the City Council of December 13th, noting that this is not only the last meeting of the year, but the last meeting of this decade. And ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
Cunningham.
President.
Ellison.
President.
Goodman.
President.
Johnson.
President.
Palmisano.
President.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
President.
Fletcher.
President.
Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments from councilmembers? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting on November 22nd and the adjourned meeting from December 11th for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the minutes are accepted. Finally, I'll entertain a motion to refer petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees for the next cycle.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is to receive the reports of our standing committees, beginning with Committee of the Whole, presented by the Chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings forward five items today. Item number one is a correction to the business license issued by the city for Las Charroas Restaurant. Item number two is the appointment of election judges for next year's special primary and general election in House District 68. Item number three is two appointments to the racial equity community advisory committee. Item number four is a staff direction convening a restorative justice and adult diversion group. And item number five is a resolution supporting the resettlement of refugees to the city of Minneapolis. I move approval of the Committee of the Whole report.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Did I just see someone in queue that I missed?
Fletcher.
Councilmember Fletcher. It's okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank everybody for adding your names to the resolution affirming our commitment to welcoming refugees to our city. I know that the mayor was also here expressing support, and I just wanted to note the unified message that our council is sending on our continued support for being a city that welcomes everyone.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment that I missed? All right. I don't see any. So those items passed. Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher, for bringing that forward. The next report is from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 15 items forward for approval this morning. Items one, two, three, and four are all new business licenses. Item number five is the work by Councilmember Cunningham and others on tenant relocation assistance, as well as item six, which is the emergency housing repairs ordinance. I believe that's also Councilmember Ellison. Item seven, I'm going to be moving to remove from the agenda. They did finally pay their back taxes, so we can remove that from the agenda. Item eight are the liquor license approvals, nine are gambling license approvals, 10 are business license operating conditions for Doran Companies. Item 11 are license operating conditions for Mill City Massage. Item 12 is the workforce development RFP for eligible providers for our services for 2021 through 2025. Item 13 is an interim lease agreement with North Star Community Rowing. Item 14 is a forgivable loan. And item 15 is the geo-bond obligation from the state to the city for the grants for the family partnership. With that, I'll move all items for approval except for item seven that has been moved to delete from the agenda.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report, including that motion to delete item seven. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak to item number five with the tenant relocation assistance ordinance. I'm very grateful and excited for this work because it addresses a critical gap in supporting our city's most vulnerable renters who are currently forced to live in substandard unhealthy housing. The city of Minneapolis is now better able to hold bad actors accountable while minimizing harm to their renters. This is one step in, of many, to make sure that we are truly creating a city that welcomes and protects our renters. Again, this is just one part of several actions that we have begun taking and will continue to undertake to address the unique needs of our city's growing population of renters. I want to be sure to thank, we had a cross-departmental collaboration that was made up of the City Attorney's Office, CPET Housing, Regulatory Services. And also, we worked with community, a diverse group of stakeholders. I think that it's important to note that in this, we had both the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association and HomeLine, both speak in favor of this ordinance, which is slightly miraculous. So I just wanted to make sure we named that. We managed to thread the needle on this topic. We worked with renters as renter advocates, as well as landlord and property owners and their advocacy groups. And so we also did a focus group with the housing and fire inspectors to make sure that we are really fleshing out not only a solid policy, but how it will be implemented well. And so I ask for my colleague's support with this ordinance. It will take effect June 1st, along with the other renter protections that we have recently passed. So I'm excited and grateful for this work. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any comments or other discussion? I don't see any. I will, I do want to comment on this item as well. Extra thanks to Councilwoman Cunningham for bringing this forward and to the Regulatory Services Department. Earlier this year, we adopted a renter-first policy that was intended to guide how the Regulatory Services Department approaches their work. And they've embraced that approach. The director, Kim Keller, has really thoughtfully put together a plan of action that includes a lot of steps that are in the spirit of that work, which is prioritizing the people who live in buildings in our community. And I think this is one example of the fruits of that work and how important it is for us to set policy direction for our departments. I think it has been a successful model in a number of examples, and this is one. So thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, again, for bringing this forward. Anything else? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report comes from the Enterprise Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam President. There are five items being brought forward by Enterprise Committee for consideration this morning, all our contract amendments. Item number one is a contract amendment with Everlaw for e-discovery and redaction software. Item number two is a contract amendment with One Neck for our outsourced managed services on, about IT. Item number three is with Bergen KDV for technical support and compliance for our convention center parking ramp. Item number four is a West Publishing Corporation agreement for online research services with MPD. And item number five is a contract amendment with New Vest for workplace investigations for outstanding and previous obligations that we've incurred. I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Palmisano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward eight items for approval. The first two are land sales. The first one is a land sale of 1337 Newton Avenue South. The second action is approval of some 52 land sales. It's a major action that we take every year as part of our Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance Program. There's 52 new homes that will be built. Three of those will be duplexes and one triplex. Nine developers will be involved, and all of those are awards. Four and five, and we're hoping to see those close our homeownership racial disparities, as well as our home development racial disparities, and I think we're making progress there. Third item is a modification, the third modification to our housing replacement district tax increment financing plan. The fourth is approving Merrow reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. The fifth is carrying forward our 2019 tax exempt housing revenue bonds, the remainder. Item number six is a transfer of a redevelopment contract with Blue Gold Ventures LLC to Great Lakes Property Group. This is for a property at 756 Jackson Street Northeast. And the seventh is accepting bids for property maintenance, mowing, and snow removal. And item eight is approval of amendments to our unified housing policy that would include our inclusionary housing policy in there. This is significant amendments that will allow us to implement and support implementing our inclusionary zoning policy that we've been working on. I also want to call attention to an amendment that I forwarded to everybody yesterday, and you should have it at the dais there. I also want to move this amendment to the policy. It relates very specifically to student-eligible housing. We realized there were some complications based on the amendment we made at committee, and this deals very specifically with properties that are in the university overlay district that lease and rent by bedrooms and only pertain to those that aren't receiving our tax and rent finance or revenue loss offset assistance. I'll move the amendment. I could read it all if you like as well. And I'll move the full report. And I'll move the full report.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report in addition to the printed motion for item number eight, which is in front of us, and I think Councilmember described well. If any Councilmembers have questions, feel free to ask. I don't think we need to read the whole thing out loud, that's just mine. If anyone wants him to, please ask. Is there any comment on this item or the HPD agenda as a whole? Councilmember Schrader.
Sure. This is kind of the first part of our inclusionary zoning, so it is a pretty exciting day. I know most of us are just excited to have it be the last meeting of the decade, but it is a long, long process to get to the point where we are able to say with new development is going in this city affordability in all parts. And now, thanks to the work of Fletcher and Gordon, even on a college campus, everyone will have access to affordable housing. So, I'll be brief, but it is something that this is pretty monumental, that this is another way that the city is committing to making sure it's affordable for everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to comment on item number four, reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. I just received comments from constituents asking for more transparency in that process, and so I would ask my colleagues to think about how we can create more transparency for our appointments to boards and commissions in the future, and I am going to be voting no on item number four.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I do think it's very important to recognize how big a deal this is that we're passing inclusionary zoning today and the work that particularly you and Councilmember Schrader have done. I just really want to appreciate this. I think it's a big deal. I think it's symbolically kind of great that this is the last meeting of the decade and that we are setting the stage for the next decade to be the decade of affordability, that this is a symbolically very important thing to be doing here today. We said last year that we wanted to see students included. We got that done. Thank you for everybody who's worked with us on that, and thank you to everyone who showed some leadership at some part of this process. It's very important, and I'm thrilled to be voting for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I first just, I wanted to say something about inclusionary zoning, but before I do that, I just want folks to know that the public housing appointments are the mayor's appointees. So, all we're doing is confirming the people. The mayor had his own process and appointed someone who served on the board, who's done a very good job, as well as our housing director, Andrea Brennan. So, these are not our appointees. Councilmember Gordon can speak to how we will be appointing our appointees, but I just wanted to note that. I put my name in queue to speak about the inclusionary zoning issue because I think we're discussing it now rather than in zoning and planning, and that is fine. I want to congratulate Council President Bender. I think it means a lot coming from someone who wasn't so enthusiastic about this idea as it was brought forward. It's one thing for people who always wanted to do it to say it's great. It's another thing for people who were not enthusiastic about it to say that it turned out really well. And the reason I think it turned out really well is because the council members who have been working on this hired a firm, Grounded Solutions, who had a data-driven approach, and they determined that they could figure out kind of what the breaking point was from a profit point of view, and where there was a lot of profit and when there was even more profit. And we have determined that this is not a question of whether or not developers ultimately will make money. They won't build if they won't make money. What we're doing is trying to even the playing field for affordable housing because even in 20 years that I've been on the council, I've asked almost every developer doing a project in my ward, will you add affordable housing? And pretty much unanimously, I've been told no. Sometimes not even with a reason. It's just simply been, no, I'm not going to do it, which leads me to believe they're just saying, well, we want a higher yield or a greater amount of money as a result of the risk that we're taking. And now we see developers from other cities moving in at a more aggressive pace. They've worked in cities that have inclusionary zoning and other regulations in the past, and they don't seem to be alarmed by this. I do think there's been some rhetoric surrounding an alarm about this, but I don't think that that is going to end up being what we see. Eight percent affordable, I'll remind you, in a unit of 100 units is eight. We're not talking about adding a massive burden here, we're asking about doing your fair share. And so, the fact that it took a long period of time probably also was helpful in that more information and data came out that proved that this was something that we almost had to do. And to be frank, after we created an entitlement situation in the 2040 Plan where developers pretty much can build anything they want throughout most of the city, the least they can do is put some affordable housing in and live up to the goals that have been set by this council. So, I realize I have a lot of personal friends and constituents who are unhappy about this, and I'm sorry they're unhappy about it, but I would say that the data shows that this is something that's doable, that's being done in other cities, and if we want, as policymakers, to walk the talk on affordable housing, this is the kind of thing we need to put in place. I want to thank the folks who have worked on it and who have gotten us to the point where I think this will end up being a unanimous vote today. You know, this council has been known for some level of conflict, and in the past year it seems like we've worked through that and have figured out how to work together and how to compromise on a number of issues while allowing individuals to lead in the areas where they do best, and so I really commend the people who have worked on this for bringing everyone along.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that our Council Vice President brought attention to the email that we received early this morning about the MPHA Commissioner appointment process. And while I agree with Councilmember Goodman that this looks to be a mayoral appointment, I think that we have a strong dual partnership with the mayor's office in that this is coming before the council for our review and approval. So, I just want to call attention to this matter because it was a letter that was signed by not one or two or three Northside Neighborhood Association groups, but more like seven. And so, it's Cleveland Neighborhood Association, Fallow Neighborhood Association, Harrison Neighborhood Association, Hawthorne Neighborhood Association, Heritage Park Neighborhood Association, Jordan Area Community Council, the Northside Residents Redevelopment Council, Shingle Creek Neighborhood Association, Victory Neighborhood Association, Weber Camden Neighborhood Association. So, I do think this requires more conversations, and I don't feel comfortable approving this particular item today as part of the Housing Policy Committee. I just leaned over and talked to the Chair of the committee, and we talked about moving forward a motion to delay that portion of the agenda and bring it back after one cycle. And so, Madam President, I would like to make that motion to have us approve the entire Housing Policy Development Committee package without number four and having number four come back to us in one cycle after further conversations with the neighborhood associations and the mayor's office.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Councilmember Conno has moved to delay, postpone item four one cycle, bringing it back to the city council then it would be during our first meeting of 2020, as I understand the motion. So, let's discuss that motion separately, so we'll set aside the rest of the agenda for now, and I'll take any discussion or questions or comments on this new item four. I don't know if the Clerk can create one of those new columns in that. Thank you.
I appreciate the conversation. I will note that we as a council and as a committee didn't reconvene our task force that we had previously with the appointment process late last year when there was council appointments and mayoral appointments. We didn't have a lot of conversations with the mayor about this. We also, I think the committee just generally felt that this is our Director of Housing getting reappointed, and this is a longstanding MPHA member that nobody had raised concerns about, who we understand has been attending the meetings and participating, and the mayor brought the recommendation forward. So, we as a council didn't go through a very big process. That said, I also don't know that delaying it one cycle would cause any, I'm sure it would cause concerns about the reappointment process and what happened to those individuals, but it wouldn't necessarily mean nobody attends the meetings or they don't function as the commissioner that they already are because these are reappointments, and it would give the opportunity for some of my colleagues who are concerned about it to speak with the mayor. So, if that's the sense of our group here, and you can certainly all weigh in and discuss it, I'm not going to try to stand in the way of delaying it one cycle in order to do our due diligence. It is unfortunate we didn't get this letter prior to the committee, and I'll just note that this follows the same open appointments process of all of our other boards and commissions so that there's notice about when there's open appointments. They're all collected by the deadline, they're vetted with the appointing authorities, and then come through the committee process. So, it wasn't anything unusual or different necessarily. Finally, I'll just note, the council does have a new, another person to appoint to this board or commission. We chose not to do it in December, but to take our time and make sure all the applications come in. I'll be reconvening our internal task force that in the past included the Council Vice President and Vice Chair of the Housing Committee, Councilmember Ellison, and our staff so we can look at those applications and come forward with a recommendation. We also have a reappointment person who's reapplied there as well. I'll just note that for folks here. So, hopefully that input will help inform your decision on this vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon, thanks for your comments. This is the mayor's appointment. Let him be accountable for the people that he appoints. One of these people is our housing director. Delaying this gives an impression to the people who are unhappy with public housing that we are going to bounce our housing director off the Public Housing Authority Board. And it also says that we don't think that the two people that the mayor has appointed are doing a good job, and what does it say to them? This is the mayor's appointment. These are two incumbents at a time at which we don't have a director. So, delaying this sends a very negative message to our housing director, and if you can say that's not what it's about, but if you are fine with Andrea Brennan being on the Public Housing Authority, delaying it is just a shot at her. It's not going to create a different outcome. All it's doing is appeasing people who are complaining, even though we're going to turn around and do it in three weeks. So, I want to be clear that if you go ahead and vote to delay this, you better be looking at opening, asking the mayor to reopen his process, to pick someone different, because delaying it for no reason when the outcome's going to be the same seems to be pandering to me.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. My intent in bringing forward this issue is to open up the process so that our community members can understand how and who makes these appointments. That's the whole point, is creating transparency. So, absolutely understand that it's the mayor's appointment. I've been involved in the council's appointment process throughout this entire year and really had a very robust and inclusive process for appointing council appointees, and we need to have people understand how the mayor makes his appointments as well.
Councilmember Cunningham.
I actually am deferring for council, to Councilmember Ellison, who does not have speaker management.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. I, you know, I definitely understand the concerns that are being brought up from the Council Vice President and Councilmember Conno, but I do feel like this is, that this request, I am questioning the earnestness of this request because I think this is a part of a campaign to really spread a lot of misinformation about what's happening with public housing. I was able to go to a rally that was held in North Minneapolis where I think this letter probably spawned out of, and I think that while we need to be having a lot of debate about some of the, you know, some of the conversions and all that stuff, we can have that debate, but I think that this, the conversation that was had at that rally was not very helpful, and there's a lot of misinformation being spread there. And so, yeah, so I feel like I'm going to go ahead and vote for these appointments. I don't see the use in delaying, and I'm happy to follow up with these neighborhood groups, but I also want to make sure that we are not purposefully or accidentally sort of furthering or cosigning a campaign that I believe is designed to spread some misinformation. That's all I'm going to say.
Councilwoman Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I'm not privy to the information that Councilmember Ellison just shared. The letter, I'm simply basing my motion on the letter that was sent to us this morning at 8:00 AM. I agree that it would have been nicer to receive this information before. Sometimes our communities don't have the privilege to be able to mobilize at faster rates because they have other priorities that are pressing on their plates. My intent is not to fear monger here or to attack anyone in CPED's department. If you read the letter, which you can open up in your email right now, it was sent at 8:05 AM, it is strictly a question about process and racial equity and wondering why or how a specific individual is being reappointed to the body since they have been serving on this body for a very, very long time. So, I don't think, from what I can tell on this letter, I don't think there's a nefarious intent about some sort of campaign against public housing or anything like that, given, I think, the sensitivity of the issues we have seen in the news and in other wards that have involved fires and that have involved housing campaigns to, you know, that come to us regularly via email. I think it would be prudent for us to pause, engage this community, and just get more input in it from them as to this appointment. I cannot tell you what the outcome of this action is going to be. It would be wrong for me to have a predetermined outcome for pulling this item out and saying we need to have this conversation with the mayor's office and the 10 neighborhood associations that just submitted this letter. So, I cannot speak to whether or not the appointment process is going to change, whether the nominees who are being brought forward are going to change, but I can guarantee you that more conversations are going to be more beneficial versus less. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion to postpone the item? I don't see any, so Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to postpone item four.
Councilmember Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
No.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Palmisano.
No.
No.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are two yays and eleven nays.
That motion fails, which returns us back to the original HPD agenda, including that the item four would be forwarded. I see Councilmember Cunningham in queue there, but that might be old.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to go back to the inclusionary zoning, since again, it seems like this is the place where we're talking about it. I just want to thank so much those of my colleagues who have led on this policy. I wasn't entirely sure about it because I'm not deeply in that sort of work in my day-to-day work that I do as a council member and as a policymaker. I really appreciate the level of, the depth of data, of the evidence-based decisions that are being made, the structure of it. Any concern that I had going into approving this was alleviated. Grassroots solutions, I think, is an ideal partner in this work to be able to have both a progressive lens as well as marrying that with concrete data. And so, this is something that I am happy and excited to support, and I'm just so grateful for the level of leadership that has been demonstrated with this work because it was so thorough. It really addressed any concern that I would have had, I feel like a lot of my community would have had. It's clearly laid out, and so I am grateful to my colleagues for this and am happy to support it. I will say, in my ward, that I don't imagine that this is going to have like a huge impact in my ward since we have low density. And so, as we're looking forward over the next 18 months of evaluating this policy, I would ask for my colleagues to also consider how do we collaborate to look at the missing middle component, because that's really where a lot of the density is going to come from in my ward, is with units that are between 3 and 20. And so, how do we figure out about And so how do we figure out balance approach in a community that needs affordable housing desperately in North Minneapolis? And so I know that we wanted to start in a certain place, and I can hold that, and I think it's really great policy. And as we move forward, how can we dig in to be able to really get to some of the other challenges that, based on the circumstances and the density of other parts of the city that really need it, like my community? So thank you.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Cunningham, absolutely. I think this does seem to be where we're talking about inclusionary zoning, so I'll kind of finish up my comments, but we're in a housing crisis, and that means we don't necessarily have all the options we'd like. And so I'm really proud of this policy. It takes into account our current market, what we think will be the future market, but it also leaves room for growth. This is something that's important to every single one of our wards. We need to make sure the folks that are living here are able to continue that, that we're able to welcome new folks as people grow in their lives and grow in their housing needs. We need to have our housing reflect that. Again, this policy is a great first step, and I'm really excited to see how this works out. We will be reevaluating, that's built into the policy, to re-go through the data and make sure that it is having the effect we want. But on that said, you know, there's a lot of people to thank. I first and foremost just want to thank the city staff. Like, this was something that was very hard to really come to, and they put in a lot of hours, a lot of extra hours to make this work, and so my thanks go to all the CPED staff. I'll also kind of leave some of this for the council president as well, but I also want to thank kind of our respective staffs. Carla Weingman in my office, Indiana in your office, who just put in so many hours to make sure that council members' concerns and comments were built in to this policy, to make sure that this is something we're, in one voice, going to really set as a kind of housing principle for the Minneapolis going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So this item is the unified housing policy portion of inclusionary zoning, which is partnered with item seven from the Zoning and Planning Committee Agenda, which is the zoning ordinance components of inclusionary zoning. I am also thrilled that we'll be starting the next decade with affordable housing baked into new housing projects. I've spent half of this last decade bringing this policy forward, building support along with advocates, so on a personal note, I'm thrilled that we're here, ready to vote on it. You know, I think staff and grounded solutions first came to Minneapolis in 2015 or 16 and met with every single member of that city council, introducing this idea, talking about how inclusionary zoning was one tool to build affordable housing in a growing city. And I'm not sure we really had the support we needed to pass a policy then. So I really want to thank all of you for being here, for bringing to City Hall the value of creating inclusive communities. I want to thank the advocates from the Homes for All Coalition, and so many folks, our constituents, members of the public in Minneapolis, who asked us time and time and time again, as we were knocking on their doors and calling them on the phone, telling us that affordable housing was one of their number-one priorities for our city, and that we shouldn't grow in a way that is leaving folks behind. You know, inclusionary zoning is one tool. It isn't going to get us the very deepest levels of affordability that we really need to help folks who are in danger of experiencing homelessness or coming out of homelessness. We need and have other tools for those parts of our goals. But this will help us make sure that when neighborhoods are growing very quickly, when new housing comes in, that it includes affordability within it. And I think that piece of creating inclusive neighborhoods is so critical. We built the policy so that developers do have choices and options, including paying an in-lug fee, but we structured it so that they were incentivized to build those units on-site. And when I think about places that have grown rapidly, including in Ward 10, looking back over this past decade, I wish we had had this policy in place, because we would have thousands of affordable housing units in those neighborhoods that are becoming the least affordable to folks. So I also want to highlight how much work went in to making sure that students were addressed and centered in this policy. We're a bit unique in Minneapolis, that so much of our student housing is in newer apartment buildings, and council members Gordon and Fletcher worked so hard to make sure that we sort of twisted our housing policies as far as we could for now in making sure that this was working for students. I think there's more to do in that area, as well as making sure that all of our affordable housing definitions and policies are really working for folks. Because again, these levels of affordability are not hitting the lowest-income people, they're missing, it's missing a lot of working people in our community that we need to continue to build policy for and around. I want to thank our staff, Andrea Brennan and her team, who put so many hours into this. It is a complex policy, and we tasked them, with making sure, our staff, with making sure that a policy like this wouldn't stop growth. Because first of all, we need housing in our city. Our city is growing, and we have a housing shortage. And because this tool, more importantly, requires new affordable housing, new housing to come in so that some of it can be affordable. It's working to leverage private investment to build affordable housing. So if we built zero new units next year, we would have zero new affordable housing from this tool. So they struck a good balance. I think in the future, we may be able to push this policy farther. I think we'll learn a lot from this policy in the next couple of years, especially as the 2040 Plan comes into effect, allowing more growth along transit corridors all over our city. There's been an incredible amount of resistance to this policy, so I think this data-driven approach, the care that staff took, was really important. But I also think that a lot of those fearful statements were unfounded in reality, and that we need to be brave enough to make policy that addresses the problems with the status quo. And that if we are too concerned about making change, what we're really doing is leaving folks out of our growth. So I'm glad that we took this step. We're joining many, many cities around the country in demanding that new growth and new housing includes affordability, and I'm excited to see how this grows in the future. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye on all items except number four.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye on the, on the, I'm sorry, on all the items except for number four.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes in the report except for item number four, which has 11 ayes and two nays.
Those items carry, and the agenda is adopted. That brings us to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee. That report will be given by the chair, council member Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights Engagement Committee brings forward 10 items for approval today. The first is the invasive tree species ordinances. Item number two is the environmental program fee ordinance. Item number three is approving council and mayoral appointments to the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights. Item number four is a gift, items four and five are gift acceptances for the Health Department. Item number six is approving council reappointments and mayoral reappointments to the Workplace Advisory Committee. Item number seven is approving city council and mayoral appointments to the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council. Item number eight is the passage of a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Item number nine is passage of a resolution establishing a social cost of carbon. And item number 10 is passage of a resolution adopting a sustainable building policy. I move approval of all 10 items, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Schrader.
I just want to thank all of my council members. We have made some pretty big environmental policies in this last committee. I'm really excited about that, and I think it's kind of worth noting. We really look at climate change, and on both ends of that spectrum, there's two futures we could see. We could see one where we have a more equitable city, where we have adopted and become more resilient, and we've brought absolutely everybody along with us. And then on the other end, and this unfortunately is the end that's probably more likely, where scientists are saying we're headed because we have not made change quick enough, is where some climate catastrophe happens and the city's not prepared. I'm really proud of the three policies we're adopting here, and my thanks to council member Gordon for working on that. I feel like, while we definitely need to work in the next year and going forward on doing more, it really sets us up to learn more about like what those costs will be to the city and to all of our constituents, and really be thoughtful about kind of all of our policies going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Council vice president.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to speak a little bit to item number eight, the declaration of a climate emergency. When we passed this out of committee, you know, I was happy to support this declaration, resolution, but I also challenged the advocates and community to really do more efforts to include communities of color, and specifically African-Americans, in this discussion and in this fight to save our planet. And so to that end, I am hosting a community event in January, inviting a number of activists and environmental justice advocates to come together and discuss, along with more mainstream advocates, so that that connection and those networks can begin in earnest to work towards this issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next report will be from our Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the chair, council member Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 13 items today for full council consideration. Item one is the 18th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project, approval, assessment, and areaway abandonment. Two is the Gerard Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project, and a similar set of approvals. Three is the speed limit ordinance with staff directions moving forward. Item four is the contract amendment with the Cohen Partners for PV Plaza Project. Five is the contract amendment with Meyer Contracting Incorporated for the 61st Street West Street Reconstruction Project. Six is the contract amendment with Valley Paving Incorporated for 42nd Avenue North Reconstruction Project. Seven is the contract amendments with Williams Towing, Corky's Towing, Twin Cities Transportation or Transport and Recovery, Rapid Recovery, and Statewide Towing for towing services. The amounts of those contracts are listed. Eight is the contract amendment with AE2S Construction for finalization of payment with the Pump Station 7 Outdoor Construction Project. Nine is the request for proposals for planning and engineering services for Bryant Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Ten is the Metropolitan Council Municipal Infiltration Inflow Grant for cured-in-pipe lining, repairs for existing sewers. Eleven is the Carbon Neutral Cities Alliance Grant for design and deployment of mobility hubs, including pure exchange. Twelve is the 2020 Street Resurfacing Program, project designation, cost estimate, and setting the public hearings. The project areas are listed. And the final items are the 2020-2022 Minneapolis Vision Zero Action Plan and adopting that plan moving forward. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to speak specifically at item 3.1. At committee, I abstained on that particular item, just to spend more time thinking about it. It's the passage of the ordinance authorizing Public Works to have the authority to establish speed limits for city streets. And I really also want to say I appreciate council member Reich's staff directions, which are items 3.2 and 3.3 on there. I supported those staff directions, and I still do. I believe there's opportunities to reduce speed limits, to improve public safety across our city, and I spoke a committee about my own experiences as a pedestrian, almost being hit multiple times in the last year. So I do support reducing speed limits. To be candid, I've also had a number of projects in my ward being led by Public Works that fell short on expectations, on community engagement, communication, timelines, implementation, and quality. I'm confident Director Hutchinson, I'm confident of Director Hutchinson's commitment to learning from those instances and making improvements. I also believe this is a big change, and it's important that it's well-executed. And that's why I don't feel comfortable effectively approving it before we have a plan. I think that's putting the cart before the horse. So I will be voting against item 3.1. I would ask the president if that needs to be separated out, or if the clerk could just take, it sounds like, my vote on that. And I think I also might be the only one voting this way today, so I do want to say that I hope this goes really well. I hope we have a solid communications plan in place, because I think this represents a really great opportunity to improve public safety and reduce the number of injuries and fatalities within our city. I think it's an important step, and I really want to see it done well.
Thank you. I put myself in queue to talk about this item as well as item 13, which is the adoption of the Vision Zero Action Plan. I want to thank Chair Reich for your leadership on this. We committed to a Vision Zero statement in 2017, and that was to eliminate deaths and serious injuries from traffic crashes in our streets within 10 years. I think this is an achievable goal. Our streets, like other public infrastructure, our water systems, are places where government has a lot of direct control over what happens. We have control over the design of the streets, we have control over the speed limit, over the timing of our signals, and we are, we've inherited decades of design of our streets for cars. Our streets have often been designed for streets to speed quickly through our neighborhoods, not designed for the people who are walking along them, living on them, and enjoying their community outside of vehicles. And frankly, we've set up a situation where people are not safe traveling through our city, which is unacceptable. And we have the responsibility, the authority, and the possibility of making change, again, knowing how much work is ahead of us because of so many decades of engineering for cars. I think the Vision Zero Action Plan is a really meaningful step. Like all plans, it will require implementation, it will require us to fund changes, it will require us to take action and be bold. I think that Public Works has taken a really careful, citywide, data-driven approach to this, which will make it sustainable and lasting for a long time, and building both public and political support that will be necessary to make often some pretty tough decisions about how we are going to change that prioritization in the future. And so I'm really excited that we're ready to adopt the Vision Zero Action Plan. The speed limit ordinance is also the result of many, many years of work lobbying at the Capitol for our right as a city to set our own speed limits. We're behind other cities in this because the state of Minnesota did not allow us to have that control over our local streets until very recently. And like St. Paul, we are following the process that was set out in that new legislation that we were able to win last year with the support of so many legislators. And frankly, folks from all over the state, I think there was a surprising amount of interest from communities outside the central cities to look at this issue, because, like I said, cities around the country are having a lot of success with lowering their speed limits. And this allows Public Works to go out and do the study that is required by that state law, and then come back with a recommendation for speed limit changes. It does put that final decision within the city engineer with feedback from the public and the council. So I recognize and understand Councilmember Johnson's concerns with that particular item. I have supported this in particular after council member Reich brought forward the staff direction to clarify that process. So excited about both of these items. I'll see if anyone else wants to comment on the Transportation and Public Works Committee agenda. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President, and I think you very thoroughly captured the spirit of the work that's gone into it to date, the notion of how we want to move forward, and the work that will be entailed in the implementation, because the proof will be in how we execute. I think you captured that very well. I will note that I have a fair amount of confidence in taking on those challenges and having effective implementation, and that's sourced in two areas. I mean, we have an award-winning, nationally-recognized department. Not only is it bold in what it tries to do, it's very effective in when it gets around to doing it. And I think we have many, many examples where other communities come in to see what we're doing and how we did it as a department. But I also have a lot of confidence, because you can work through a lot of conflicts and issues when you have a really thought, well-thought-through plan, and that plan is deeply informed by community stakeholders and policymakers. And I have to give a nod to Mr. Ethan Fawley, who really put together all that input so thoroughly and so thoughtfully, and with a clarity of concision, that actually it's thoroughly and so thoughtfully and with a clarity of concision that actually it's very easy to explain to the public, who may have not participated in the input of where we're going, but to explain why we're doing it in the first place. And to have that work gives me great confidence that we can do that communication work as policymakers and leaders in our community, but also that will give strong direction to the people who do the implementing out in the streets themselves. So I want to give that specific nod out to that particular person and the department as a whole. And thank you for your comments, Madam President. I think they were spot on.
Thank you. Any further discussion on TPW? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No on 3.1, aye on all other items.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes on the report, except for item 3.1, with twelve ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted, and those items carry. The next report is from our Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsani.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings eighteen items for approval today. And item number one is the Capitol Long Range Improvements Program Ordinance. Item number two is the Legal Settlement of Kiara Kier versus City of Minneapolis et al. Item number three is Workers' Compensation, and this is the interest payments related to the Osland Decision. Item number four is a grant from the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District, and this is to fund downtown strategic justice partnership. Item number five is a contract amendment with Urban Ventures to provide sentencing alternatives for gross misdemeanor and weapon offenses. Item number six is a waiver of conflict of interest for Frederickson &amp; Byron, PA. Item number seven is a folk and traditional arts grant for arts programming to support the artistic traditions and customs practiced within cultural groups. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Pioneer Power Inc. for convention center steam room cooling project. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for operation of the Commons. Item number ten is a contract amendment with Impact Mailing for Minnesota Inc. for mailing services. Item number eleven is a contract amendment with Association for Black Economic Power for the provision of banking services and financial literacy education for Minneapolis residents. Item number twelve is a contract amendment with Canal Street Limited Partnership for office space in the Crown Roller Mail Building. Item number thirteen is a contract amendment with HCM Architects for the Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project, Phase Two. Item number fourteen, and this was sent without a recommendation from the Committee, is a rebid for Fire Station Number Four renovations. Item number fifteen is an appointed position in the Finance Department, and this is for the Director of Investments and Debt Management. Item number sixteen is Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant for Enterprise Preparedness Services. Item number seventeen is an Emergency Management Performance Grant for Training and Exercise Services. And the final item, item number eighteen, is a 2019 grant from Hennepin County for Justice Assistance Grant for Police and City Attorney Support. And I move approval of all eighteen items.
Councilmember Worsani has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Cunningham. Miss absent. Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes on the report, except for item 3.1, with twelve ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted, and those items carry. The next report is from our Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsani.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings eighteen items for approval today. And item number one is the Capitol Long Range Improvements Program Ordinance. Item number two is the Legal Settlement of Kiara Kier versus City of Minneapolis et al. Item number three is Workers' Compensation, and this is the interest payments related to the Osland Decision. Item number four is a grant from the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District, and this is to fund downtown strategic justice partnership. Item number five is a contract amendment with Urban Ventures to provide sentencing alternatives for gross misdemeanor and weapon offenses. Item number six is a waiver of conflict of interest for Frederickson &amp; Byron, PA. Item number seven is a folk and traditional arts grant for arts programming to support the artistic traditions and customs practiced within cultural groups. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Pioneer Power Inc. for convention center steam room cooling project. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for operation of the Commons. Item number ten is a contract amendment with Impact Mailing for Minnesota Inc. for mailing services. Item number eleven is a contract amendment with Association for Black Economic Power for the provision of banking services and financial literacy education for Minneapolis residents. Item number twelve is a contract amendment with Canal Street Limited Partnership for office space in the Crown Roller Mail Building. Item number thirteen is a contract amendment with HCM Architects for the Minneapolis Police Department Warehouse Project, Phase Two. Item number fourteen, and this was sent without a recommendation from the Committee, is a rebid for Fire Station Number Four renovations. Item number fifteen is an appointed position in the Finance Department, and this is for the Director of Investments and Debt Management. Item number sixteen is Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant for Enterprise Preparedness Services. Item number seventeen is an Emergency Management Performance Grant for Training and Exercise Services. And the final item, item number eighteen, is a 2019 grant from Hennepin County for Justice Assistance Grant for Police and City Attorney Support. And I move approval of all eighteen items.
Councilmember Worsani has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Cunningham. Miss absent. Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries, and the Ways and Means report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward eight items for approval today. The first is the granting of an appeal of the property of 1309 Fifth Street Northeast. The second is approving alley vacation at 1401 1413 and 1425 Chicago Avenue. The third item I'll be moving to postpone, it's an application for a rezoning and alley vacation located at 1527 East Lake, as well as 3013 through 3037 Bloomington Avenue South, as well as 3010 through 3040 16th Avenue South. Number four are the appointments to the Arts Commission. Number five is the passage of a resolution for a local, designating a local historic landmark at the Oakland Apartments at 213 Ninth Street South. One thing I want to say, just kind of my appreciation for this, I'll leave a lot of the comments for Councilmember Goodman, but it is worth noting that this is a property that was designated for demolition, that through the work of a lot of people over a lot of time is now being designated as a historic landmark. So I think that that's amazing, that we're able to do that in the city. Moving on to number six, it's the passage of an ordinance on occupancy regulations. Number seven is the passage of the zoning parts of the inclusionary zoning regulations. I'll talk to that after the end of my report. And finally, the number eight is the granting of appeal at 4159 Hiawatha Avenue. I will move all items for approval, except I will move to postpone number three to the next council meeting at January 17, 2022. And if I could make some comments on number seven.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure, just a lot of the thunder's been said on the inclusionary zoning in the housing, but I did want to just take this opportunity because everything's kind of been said, just to thank you, Council President. Like, as I was a housing advocate before coming here, and we have a saying that, you know, everybody's for affordable housing till it moves in next door, or you have to pay for it. And what that really means is you really have to have a harder conversation about affordable housing. You have to get into the specifics, and that doesn't happen unless people work at it. And thanks to you, that happened. Inclusionary zoning really gets to what it means to have affordability, what it means to keep people in their homes, what it means to offer opportunities for people to really be able to own their own home. So I just want to thank you for that. It's been an honor to work with you and look forward to working in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a few comments on item number five. And I see a lot of people smiling, which makes me smile, because if you are unfamiliar with the story, a few years back, there was a very tragic fire at the Oakland Apartments, which is located downtown amidst a sea of surface parking lots. Standing as a beacon is one of the remaining original walk-up apartment buildings built way back in an era where the city was filled with buildings just like that. And we were faced with whether or not we would agree with the fire inspections, department's determination, that the building should be demolished as a result of the fire. And I remember at that time, staff said to me, "We're not going to be able to find anyone who's going to take this on." The property owner said, "No one will give me the half million dollars I think my property is worth," especially knowing that it sat amongst a sea of surface parking, probably making it more valuable in order to acquire an entire block within downtown. I had the good fortune to work with two young men in my ward who had preserved 300 Clifton. They're here today. Will you stand up, John and Norm? You don't have to videotape everything. John and Norm, who came to town and beautifully restored 300 Clifton in the Loring Park neighborhood. And I made a call, and I said to them, "I know you guys are really busy with making 300 Clifton even more fabulous, but would you be interested potentially in taking on this building?" And they jumped at the opportunity, and they literally scrounged up the money to buy the building, and ever since, for about a year, have been working themselves. I want to make this clear, that John and Norm are in there, literally dealing with the burned-out structure, this roof, and they have personally gotten their hands dirty restoring this building. They have an incredible Facebook page called The Oakland's on Ninth. I would urge everyone to take a look at it. It documents on a day-to-day basis what's happening. It also documents, quite frankly, on a day-to-day basis, all of the problems they've had with the city, and all of the kind of cross-information they get from the building officials and the zoning officials, and they have worked through it. And I think it's absolutely incredible. It is unheard of that in the middle of a construction project, someone would ask us to designate their building a historic landmark, and that's why we're here today, because they've asked us to designate this building. It clearly meets the criteria for designation, and as we've said in the past and noted in zoning and planning, many of the units that they are putting into this project will be naturally occurring affordable housing. Another thing no one would do, they would turn around and make them into, you know, half and half on each side of the building, luxury flats in a beautiful historic building. Instead, they're putting in about 20, 24 units, back to the last configuration. They've been in touch with people who have lived in the building prior to the fire. You know, we saw Aldo Maroni honored this morning for the incredible work that he did and has, continues to do, building our community. There are many unsung heroes in the city who stepped forward, and the reason I rise to speak to this issue is to thank them and your team of wonderful people, online and in person, who have become unsung heroes in the fight for historic preservation in the city of Minneapolis. You can see all the smiles up here. People are really proud of you. I am proud to know you, and I thank you for your incredible commitment as we vote to designate this building today.
That's great. Thank you both for being here. I put myself in queue. I just wanted to speak briefly. First of all, this is so exciting, the designation of this landmark, and thanks to Councilmember Goodman for your leadership. That's, I think it's a good example of the, one of the things that council members do, which is connecting people to problems in our communities. And we get to know them, especially serving for a longer period of time in a seat. You really get to know the community. You get to know who to call when there's a problem, and it's a great story of that, too. So for item number six, I just wanted to note that we are today taking occupancy limits out of our zoning code. This is a remnant of exclusionary zoning practices that I'm very glad is ending with this today. Next year, we will come back and amend the housing code portion of this. Under this ordinance, which is in our zoning code, no more than five unrelated adults can live together in one building, and we know that that is an outdated way of defining family and who gets to live together and who gets to live where. It's been a barrier for cooperative housing in our city. Over time, I think we've loosened how we're regulating it and enforcing it, but this will bring our zoning code in alignment with that value, as well as working toward next year's update of our housing code. So I think this is an example of something that in the past would have been more controversial, but because we've done so much work through the 2040 Plan and all of the conversations that each of you have had with your constituents, we're at a place where we know our community is accepting of lots of different lifestyles, lots of places of living, lots of different ways of living together, lots of different definitions of family that have no place in our zoning code. So thank you for everyone's support on that. And then item number seven, inclusionary zoning. I swear I was going to do this anyway, but I really did want to thank the Chair, Councilmember Schrader, for all of your work on this. I was getting a little tired after so many years of working on this, and Councilmember Schrader's energy really helped to reinfuse optimism and enthusiasm for getting this done. You're doing such a good job of chairing this committee, which is very complex. I know the Chair of the Zoning and Planning Committee spends many, many hours in the evening at Planning Commission meetings, in addition to all of the other work that we do in communities, and representing Ward 11, which doesn't have a lot of development, where development that may seem commonplace in other wards would be very controversial. I think you're striking a really great balance of representing your ward and your constituents, but also bringing that citywide value and helping all of us accommodate growth in our communities that look different from the ward that you represent. So thank you for all of your work as Chair, as ZMP, but in particular for helping bring forward inclusionary zoning, and again, your enthusiasm and optimism for getting this done. I appreciate it so very much. Is there anything else on this report? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No on eight, aye on all others.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes on the report, except for item number eight, which has twelve ayes and one nay.
That report carries.
Madam President, I have your recorded as voting no on item eight as well.
Oh, sure, yes. Any objection from my colleagues on that change? Seeing none, I'll ask the Clerk to record that vote. All right. The next order of business is reports of our special committees, and we have a report from the Executive Committee this cycle, given by the Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee sends forward one item today, which is the reappointment of David Frank as the Director of the Community Planning and Economic Development Agency. I move that, that I move that the appointment be referred to the Committee of the Whole for setting of a public hearing.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
located at 980 Hennepin Avenue East. The sample ballot for that special primary has been posted to the web and is available from the Secretary of State's site as well, as well as from the City Elections website, which can be found online at vote.miniapolismn.gov. So this special election covers precincts that are included in Ward 1, Precincts 4, 5, and 6, and 10, oh, and 10 in Ward 3. The actual date of this special primary will be on Tuesday, January 21, and polls will open 7:00 a.m., will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The special general election to fill the seat will then follow on Tuesday, February 4. So just wanted to make sure folks have that information coming up, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to just echo how enormously proud I am to be a part of this body and to work with my really, I think, thoughtful and committed colleagues as we end this decade and move into the next with, I think, one of the most progressive budgets that this city has passed, as well as a number of items, including inclusionary zoning and tenant protections and Vision Zero, all these things that are intended to help us really realize the potency of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan that we passed. And so my thanks to all of you, to all of our staff. I particularly want to thank Mr. Ruff, who stepped into the coordinator's position on an interim basis at one of the busiest times of our work cycle, and so he is to be commended for helping to guide us through this work. And just on a more global note, I will state maybe the obvious, but it's a historic day in the United States of America, not necessarily a gloriously historic day, but historic nonetheless, and that is that the President of the United States was officially impeached this morning. And, you know, I think that sends a message that our democracy is always in a state of potential imbalance, and we all have to work to the best of our abilities to make this American experiment, and that's exactly what it is, to work every day. And I think we all, as citizens of this country, and particularly as elected officials, have a duty to that responsibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I just want to take a minute to thank all of my colleagues for a terrific year. There is nobody up here who has not made some very important contribution to our city, and there is nobody up here who I haven't had a chance to do some meaningful work with over the course of the year, whether it was wage theft or work on the budget or any of the other things that we've all done. And frankly, what we voted on just this week would have been a good year's worth of work, and there's obviously a lot more than that. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done and just want to take a moment to appreciate all 13 of our office's council staff, who have been so, so critical in making that work happen. Dave and Irene in my office are doing a terrific job, but I know they can't do the work that they do without all of the great relationships and the great collaboration among all of our offices, and I just want to appreciate all of the work from city staff, and especially from our council staff, that's made a lot of our accomplishments together possible. So thanks, everyone. I wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Anything else? I don't see anything. That concludes our announcements, and we've concluded our business before the council. We do have two closed-session items, which are on the printed agenda, which I never have, but I like to read if I can, Yvonne Edwards versus the City of Minneapolis, and then the litigation matter of Keith Daniel versus the City of Minneapolis. So I'll recognize a motion to adjourn to that closed session.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. That carries, and so we are adjourned to the closed session. Thank you so much to everyone for everything this year. Happy New Year. We'll all be around still, but not up here on camera, so thank you.